Leading the Leder Town Council's order, join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. Corretti?
Here.
Mr. DeBordi?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. Bratton?
Here.
Mr. Song?
Here.
Mine here is Grozal.
Are there any resident and property owners that would like to speak before the council?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner.
Evening, Peter Gardner, citizen, real estate developer, long business owner. I'm also a member of Green Falls Associates LLC, which has done a number of subdivisions of town, built a number of roads. And I want to talk about what Green Falls is and the process that goes into subdividing property. You don't just bring a plan and give it to Charlie Carneau, he's blessed to have it recorded. You submit an application only after doing a preliminary review with town staff, preliminary review with the Planning and Zoning Commission, then you meet a subdivision, prepare a subdivision plan, which is quite involved, have a set with me if anybody would like to see it, that meets subdivision regulations, zoning regulations, and all the other rules, regulations including state health code. In this case, we then did a public hearing that's advertised in New London Day twice. Everybody had opportunities to make comment on the subdivision and say anything they wanted. Since day one, the road we have involved in that subdivision is called Starter's View. Starter's View has been used in writing legal descriptions for a number of different properties, including the deeds at the town, that the town has. Starter's View was used in preparing a marketing plan and preparing a website that the real estate agents have done, spending many thousands of dollars. In fact, the sign is up, it says Starter's View. And the town does that, and we've already paid the town for the sign that says Starter's View. During the construction of Starter's View, we had a small area of the road that settled, and we noted that in a letter to the Planning and Zoning Commission. After doing some testing, we discovered that the pavement was shy but under a few places with the depth. That's all been brought out to light. We worked with town engineer, and he and engineer that did the original design, both professional engineers, have signed off saying it meets road ordinance based on bonding being put in place. The town engineer came up with a bond estimate of $40,000. The bond has been posted, cash bond, in a passbook that we've signed a withdrawal slip to the town treasurer. We've dotted all the i's, dashed all the t's, like I said, done a number of different roads in town. We've always been well above board. In fact, the three roads we've done in town where we went above and beyond what the requirements of the subdivision regulations were. In fact, a year after the road was accepted by the town, we did thousands of dollars' worth of work on three different roads because we were asked to, because we're good citizens. Something common has been made over the last several months, it really bothered me, I've held back. You all need to know the facts and how this is all done. I've given a quick outline, I understand I only have three minutes, but I can go as long as you want me to.
As long as it's not over three minutes.
As I said, we had a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission after the thorough review of the plans and the road name. We built the road, we had the problems that have been noted, we'll certainly clean them up. We had smaller, it's been depressed, snow was, it was a real difficult deal with it. My brother and I filled it in with the same mix the town uses to fill in puddles. When the plants open up, paving plants, we're going to do it the right way. We're going to cut it out, recompact it, pave it to the same level as the rest of the road will have to be. And that includes a one-inch overlay to meet the road thickness requirements. I'm bringing all this up so council members will understand what's involved in the whole process. As I said, we've done this a number of times in a number of different towns. Posting a bond is common practice, posting a bond is all by statute. It's in place, and this is about the only town in Nold that requires a cash bond. Both towns have a letter of credit, insurance certificate, something from a bank. We put our money where our mouth is, there's $40,000 in cash sitting there to cover what the town engineer has said, plus interest, if it gets more expensive. So, I've got a lot of information here, including letters from engineers that say it meets all the regs, but the thing that you need to understand is, this isn't just a crop-up here. It went again through the same process, similar process to the approval, reviewed by the town engineer, who's wrote a letter, reviewed by the design engineer, who's written a letter about the road, reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which unanimously agreed to passing this law into acceptance, reviewed by the Land Use Subcommittee, which again, unanimously said, "Accept the road." And I hope that this commission, this council, will do the same. We've met all the obligations we have, and I hope you can unanimously accept the road as built, with the exception of the approvals we have to make, and as named. And I'll answer any questions that we may have.
Thank you. Any other residents or property owners like to speak before the council? Mr. Lamb?
I like what Mr. Gardner said, puts his money where his mouth is, he's going to complete the project. I have one question, should be a completion date on it. Plants, according to American Industries and Tilcon, they're opening around the 14th of April, weather permitting, so I would hope that a 60-day period would be sufficient to complete the road 100 percent, according to ordinance 45. Hopefully you'll take that into consideration. The other question, I guess, is for the mayor, has a water leak been found? If you'd answer that later. And where was it, how was repaired, by whom? And like to find out when the town does accept it, it'll be open to the public so that we can also watch what's being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. Any other residents or property owners like to speak before the council? Yes?
Again, with the three-minute interval, I'm going to read my remarks so that I finish in a timely fashion. Good evening, I'm Ed Monahan, 49 Homestead, and I serve as the chairman of the Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority, the Leder-based utility that provides potable water to, among other customers, roughly half of the Leder residents who receive utility water. A week ago, 5th of March, an invitation to bid on the Leder WPCA, I'm sorry, a Leder Public Works project, appeared in the classified section of the day. And I want to take this opportunity to commend the town of Leder for including in this notice, just above the signature of our finance director, Marcia Hancock, the following sentence: "The contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible and qualified bidder, whose bid is the lowest of those bidders possessing the skill, ability, and integrity necessary to perform the work in good faith." I have made amends such a statement in previous Leder requests for bids, but certainly I hope such words appear in all future such announcements. At this time, when our town is faced with apparently unavoidable increases in both its Board of Education and general budgets, and a concomitant rise in our mill rate, or increase in our mill rate, we can hope that such businesslike clarity in the town's approach to contracting will serve to set to rest the concerns caused by the contention voiced repeatedly in this chamber that, quote, "We don't have to go with the lowest bidder, even if they're deemed qualified." Again, I applaud the town's commitment to the policy of retaining the services of the fully qualified bidder, who has tendered the lowest bid in response to a formal request for bids in every instance where contracts are let. In closing, I would be remiss if I did not remind you that if such a policy had been in effect four years ago, when the operation of Leder's WPCA water system was put out to bid, this town would have reaped the savings of several hundred thousand dollars in the intervening years. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Any other resident and property owners wish to speak before the council? Committee, commission, and boards reports. Comments of town councillors? Mr. Eichelberg?
I have two comments that I've been asked to pass along. The first was, "Good job on the roads in the snow." The second was regarding the budget, "You guys have a lot of work to do."
Thank you, Mr. Eichelberg. Now, Mr. Song?
I would just like to comment on what the RFP actually said for the water contract when it was awarded. It says, it said, "The Leder WPCA will award a contract resulting from the RFP to the responsible offerer, whose offer is determined to be the best value to the town of Leder, technical price, and other factors considered. Following factors will be considered in determining best value." I won't read all the details, but the factors were technical approach and understanding, management, cost, fit, and personnel. And regarding personnel was license and experience, and we provided more details at the time. Thank you.
Any other councillors' comments? Mr. France?
Three, I'll post up the three minutes. Roxanne's going to bring up the presentation. The town council received several letters from residents concerning the budget, primarily in support of the Board of Ed side of the budget. During the public hearing and the town meeting, I presented a presentation. What I have here is a portion of that, that accounts for and makes people aware of the Board of Ed costs that are on the general government's side of the budget. Background, as I stated, the Board of Ed budget does not include the total cost of education in Leder, some of those costs are on the general government's side of the Leder. The most significant of that is the health insurance cost. In the background, that is following several years of underfunding and poor financial oversight by the Board of Ed of the health insurance line item. The town council in 2002 took the budget control authority away from the Board of Ed for that line item. Since the 2002, 2003 fiscal year, the responsibility for funding that line item, making sure it was fully funded, has resided on the town council. In addition, there are significant personnel-related costs on the general government's side that include the workers' comp, non-teacher retirement, and school nursing. There are other additional in-kind services that are, other than the debt service of school projects, it's relatively small. Next slide, please. This table summarizes the major costs. You'll note that the increase in healthcare coverage, a lot of the Board of Ed, is over a million and a half dollars. Total of these major expenses is just about the same, which amounts to a 47 percent increase in the cost. Next slide, please. Top table on this slide shows as submitted, as you'll see, the three, about three and a half percent increase that the Board of Ed has advertised in their budget. But the real number, their budget increase, if they included the costs related to personnel, primarily to healthcare, is over seven and a half percent, or almost $2.6 million. So I know that it's read in the paper, that, of course, the budget is submitted by the mayor to the town council by charter, but that includes the budget that was submitted by the Board of Ed. I want to make sure that people are aware of the total cost of the Board of Ed, and if you're looking at places to trim, you know where you need to go. If you are looking at the most significant part, you go talk to the Board of Ed, the parts that are related to the town side, other than the healthcare coverage increase, only about to a few hundred thousand dollars. And to give you some background of the healthcare, we have seen this year an inordinate amount of claims, over and above what we anticipated in the budget. And so, based on that, we have about a 13 percent increase in the healthcare costs for the coming, recommended by our insurance advisor, for the coming year. And that amounts to almost $2 million of increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. France. Any other comments?
I just want to note quickly that the media portal does not seem to be working, the camera. Okay.
Any other comments? It was just passed along to me, and thank you, that our filming of the meetings, in the past, it was very difficult to hear, and we did read, reach, read, no, we did receive a comment that it's nice to listen to now, everybody can be heard, and of course, that's based on the new equipment, and so we're certainly happy for that, and encourage anybody that hasn't been watching because of their past experience that they should listen again, for sure, so.
Our vast audience.
Our vast, well, you know, I'm always surprised at how many people watch.
So am I.
Yeah. Okay, minute approval.
Motion second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll? Mr. DeBordi?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And Mr. Dubrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
And mine here is narrow post. Motion carries, communications. I would just like to mention that there is a Freedom of Information Commission Conference that's going to be held on Friday, April 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'm actually fascinated by it, certainly considering going. Roxanne is going, so that's a very good thing, but if anybody is interested in going, they need to let Roxanne know. We did receive an email with all of this. It's, I thought it was a full day, but it's eight to two, so I think it'll be very interesting. I've always found the whole subject of freedom of information quite interesting, and we'll get the word out and hope that we get some participation from other commissions and boards in the town. You have the communication list, you also have the referral list, and a new item on that. I did meet with the mayor's assistant, Mark, and we have a solution for the liability insurance issue we were having difficulties with as far as nonprofits and quasi-government agencies like RTCs and DTCs, holding meetings on town property, or holding fundraising events on town property, and we think we have a workaround for that, and so we are, I'm going to refer an email from him to the admin committee to consider a resolution to deal with that. Okay, subcommittee liaison reports. Admin, Strichelberg?
Administration committee met earlier tonight, we moved forward several appointments. We also moved forward the authorization for the mayor to sign a grant application and grant award for the town of Leder to receive money for Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse, and Mental Health Services. We'll talk about that some more when we get to it in the agenda, and that's it.
Any questions for Admin? Finance, Mr. France?
In addition to the one item that is on the agenda tonight, the finance committee had our insurance advisor come brief us on the coming year prognosis, and also look at the history of being self-insured versus having full insurance, so having buying insurance through an anthill across or equivalent insurance company, and looking at whether it was, which one option was better than the other. So they looked at the claim history over the last several years, and also discussed some of the Affordable Care Act costs that affect the town. One of the things that was good to note, that over the last three years, while the average typically has been an eight to 10 percent increase, we've had, much below that, in fact, three years ago was a negative, a decline in costs, the last two years have been between four and five percent. As with all things, things even out, we do end up, as I said, stated earlier, about a 13 percent increase this year. But looking at the costs, our insurance advisor looked at, he asked the question concerning being fully insured through a company, and he estimated the cost would be an additional eight percent on top of what we had currently. So, finance committee saw no reason to change anything at this point, but that was the gist of the information we received.
Any questions for Finance? Okay, moving on, information technology, Mr. Dubrowski?
Information technology met on March 4th. Most of the bulk of it was based on the MIS Director's report, and you can read in more detail here, I don't want to go through too much to read all this, but basically, the MIS Director's updating various online applications, getting land use permits online, getting led-like to work, working with the mayor, get led-like to use, to people forms tracking, still working with Webster Bank and people GIS to get online billing, replacing some of the other applications so that we can continue to upgrade and get people online and out-of-beam reports and stuff like that. And there's various other things that I've pointed, that other agents, departments are looking at adding into for, like, parts of the rec, participation, a few other things like that that they're looking into adding.
Any questions for IT? Just like to add that I always like to remind the councillors occasionally to go in to the website and just sort of beta-test it and see if you notice anything. Every once in a while I go in and I'll find something that's, you know, the person is no longer in that position, something has changed, and Regina's very quick to update it, but we need to let her know because she doesn't necessarily have that information. So please take some time occasionally, maybe once a quarter, to just go in there and poke around, see if you find anything that is amiss. Land use, Planning Public Works, Mr. Dubrowski again?
Land use also met last week. We noted that the town senate committee had met on this past month, previous Monday, and with great regret noted we had the resignation from Ms. Bill O'Rourke, who was a longtime resident of Leder. He's also was the only member of the town senate committee who actually lived in Leder Center. But due to, I guess, health concerns, he had to resign from the committee, with much regret. He brought a lot forward for that committee. And they continued to discuss things going on with, like, the police facility and the lead-like for Leder Center School. The committee also reviewed roads such as Sandy Hall, Long Cove, Shugel, Pumpkin Hill, and Vinegar Hill that are used by bicyclists. Councilor Song's been working to push to have signs posted in various locations around town, notify the requirement for motorists to treat, that bicyclists have a three-foot right-of-way. So we moved forward, we agreed on several locations that I've identified in my report. The Public Works Director says that he has the funds in his signed budget to support acquisitions and installation of those signs, so at some point in the future, this is going to come to a full, to the full council for approval. We also reviewed a proposed resolution to address permanent closure of a land town road extension. Then that got approved and moved to the council as well for future agenda, and also was on agenda tonight as far as accepting Starter's View into the town road authority. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions yet?
Just wanted to add a clarification. The bicycle law was actually brought to the council by a resident who was a cyclist, and there was a long conversation on the Leder Community Gale's Ferry, Leder Gale's Ferry community forum, about cycling laws. It was amazing to me how much confusion there is about, who has the right-of-way, what to do when you see a cyclist in a car oncoming and you want to pass the cyclist, again, who's got the right-of-way? And the law is that you have to give the cyclist three feet of passing room. You can't, you can't just make it by, you got to pass them with three feet of safe clearance by state law, that's the reason for the sign. So I thought it was a great contribution by the council, so.
Any other questions for Land use? Liaison reports. Mr. DeBordi, Board of Education?
Thank you. The board started by congratulating the middle high school, middle and high school under combined band concert, and I saw the councillor, Alan, beat me to the congratulations to the wrestling team, so I'll leave that alone. Mr. Strickland indicated that during the joint finance committee meeting, he found the council members' questions to be very much appreciated and very good questions, and he also appreciated the general tone. Superintendent Patterson was, it was suggested to Mrs. Patterson during our meeting, that she again reach out to North Stonington in hopes that Wheeler High School may fit to consider regionalizing with us. This is an offer that's been presented before, and again, it was politely declined. Board wants you to know a new policy is coming soon on the management of the central activity funds. Some of you may have heard of this called the CAF account. The recent PMBC meeting with the architect discussed a variety of issues of importance in any school construction, including the possibility of increased special education numbers and the ability to reduce outplacement, which could save an awful lot of money, as well as the potential requirements perhaps coming down the pipe for universal preschool. Ms. Peck-Blewellin recommends a joint meeting of the PBMC, the Board of Ed, and the town council. The weight of the snow on the Leder Middle School roof, which was a cause of concern to some citizens, has been checked and determined to be well within the safety parameters, and the maintenance director is preparing for submission to the board, an analysis of the significant infrastructure needs in several schools. In the business manager's report, it stated that in April, the state will monitor the school lunch program at two schools, and these programs must be shown to meet national requirements. The board is receiving proposals for energy improvements in hopes of reducing costs, and grants from the state provide incentives for this. They indicated that electrical outlets are too few in most schools, with many classrooms having only one, oh, excuse me, only two. Under information items, there were presentations, and I emphasize that the presentations were extensive, and to really get what was going on there, you'll need to look at them. There were PowerPoints presented by principals of both Leder Middle School and Leder High School, having to do with the upcoming budgets, and Mr. Keith, the middle school principal, discussed specific increases in each subject and activity area. The bottom line for the middle school was an increase of approximately $121,000 to approximately $124,000, 121,4 to 123,800. The high school principal, Mrs. Amanda Fagan, broke the high school spending into five major categories. She also broke out a lot of individual line items, and the bottom line for the high school is approximately $403,000 for next year. There was extensive discussion on several items related to next year's school calendar, such as Veterans Day and the 2015 graduation date. The board has indicated that before finalizing the calendar, they will seek parent input on these and any other issues. And finally, policies on charging school meals and on alcohol, drugs, and tobacco usage were passed unanimously.
Any questions for Mr. DeBordi? Thank you. WPCA?
WPCA has not met, but I did attend the permanent municipal building committee meeting with Councilor France, and there was an update on the pump station on Avery Hill Road, and we also received an update from the mayor today about that. The contractor actually started today on site. The pump station is being built, should be built within the next month or so, and could be operational by the end of May. And again, this is all pending weather, but they are moving forward, but weather has been the primary holdup. And it was also mentioned in questioning about the project management, and that Bratton Utilities is the project manager for this project, and they are well on your budget, and their costs are doing so. That's my report.
Any questions? Permanent Building Committee?
In addition to the water project that Councilor Song just addressed, they walked through the police facility and the middle school project, or school projects. On the police facility, they, Brian Hughes, which is a councilman, has brought a schedule of events forward to still being the goal, it was tasked to the building committee of making an RFP, a May RFP, for going out for construction bid. They planned several meetings in March to discuss various details of the construction process, and there's a fourth one to be with town officials that's still to be scheduled. They've targeted particularly means of planning and zoning, other town commissions that are required to get through the process. One of the subjects that came up was fire suppression, the, working with the fire marshal, there's, they're still working through that process. It's not something that was in the original bid, so it's something that we choose to add to the additional cost where we have to be trade space off or something else. They did discuss the, also the potential of the land swap or the additional small sliver of land related to drainage, and also are still in discussion of additional portion of land that would impact the parking situation. On the Board of Ed facilities project, they had a discussion- On the Board of Energy Facilities project, they had a discussion of the Democrat, demographic study that was recently completed and how that would impact the project. The representative, Mr. Ireland from Silver Pecochelli, says he's resolved all the questions that he has to proceed forward with the project from both the building committee and the Board of Ed. And their, all the outstanding issues from preliminary design, from his perspective, have been resolved. He did present a draft of that to the building committee, which they are reviewing. I had to leave at that point for another of these.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add some comments about this particular committee. I've, I've attended a few meetings now. And the permanent municipal building committee has three major projects going on right now. They're finishing up Avery Hill, the pump station just reported. They're working on the police station, and they're working on the school project. And they're very well-run meetings. There's a lot of expertise. People don't always agree, but there's always understanding between both sides. It's a very interesting meeting to watch. It's a lot of work, and it's done on time, and, you know, they move along very well. Very impressed.
Any questions?
Good question. How soon after the new pump station is built are they going to take care of the old pump station? Are they going to roll right into it?
You tell me about the old pump station over here in Gallop Hill.
Avery Hill.
Oh, the Avery Hill, the well itself, the well, pump station. That's being handled by the W P C A. That well has to be abandoned and filled. And there is a long list of inventory of wells and pump station equipment and other supplies, literally buildings that have to be demolished immediately. And that's just one of them. So the W P C A is currently working on a list of those. They're prioritizing them. They're going to be coming back to the town with their best.
Okay, so at some point.
At some point.
Yeah.
Short answer?
Yeah.
So, at some point.
Thank you.
Mayor Ron Leakam?
A meeting was held in my office on, a meeting was held in my office on March 5th between myself, the mayor of Groton City, and the director and staff of Groton Utilities. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss a proposal to contract W P C A bill and services to Groton Utilities. This is an issue which has been in discussion for almost four years. Water operations are already being conducted by, and very successfully by Groton Utilities. And we're, we're working with the W P C A to determine the best way to provide the service that benefits the W P C A ratepayers and the town. The police building, as Council of France indicated, is progressing. Tomorrow is a pre-bid meeting on the demolition here on the site, with bid openings on the 20th of March and potentially early April, actual demolition process to begin. We're really scurrying to get those buildings emptied because there's just a tremendous amount of stuff, you know? If any of you have moved recently, or you know what it's like to move, you know, you think everything's empty, so you have to go in and get those last few things out. And so we're really scurrying to get the buildings emptied and to identify tomorrow anything that's going to remain or be in there when the buildings are demolished. The architect gave a schedule, a preliminary schedule of construction, you know, again, looking at a start by, construction's apart by commencement by July and potential completion. You know, I forget the date that he used, but, you know, I'm hoping sometime in late spring, I'm sorry, late summer of 2015. As part of the design process, the town has been metering the water use. The reason being, we have to design the septic system for the actual use that's metered. That is what Ledge Light would demand. You know, for a new building, if it's strange, you can use the estimated based on the building size. But for an existing building, if you have a meter that says you're using a certain amount, that's what you have to use. So we've done more precise metering. We've brought the use down from 40,000 gallons a month down to under 10,000 gallons a month. There's no indication of where this loss is occurring, and perhaps the actual start of construction will solve this mystery. If not, repiping the water to the police station and to the town hall directly from the main on Colonel Ledge Highway will obviously give us the direct source of the water. And once we do that, we can shut the water which comes from across the street at the Ledge Center School. And then, you know, that, that should end that problem. Finally, the town's pension manager, new pension manager, I N G, has been having group and individual meetings with town hall employees for those that are involved in the 457 plan. It's a, it's a benefit that the town has provided for near 20 years now for all employees and for newer employees. It is the employee share of the defined contribution pension plan. So those are going well, they're well-received. It's, it's a little bit of a, a little different because we've never done this education program before. And so we're getting some very, very good feedback on that as employees start to recognize the benefits of these programs. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor? Yes.
On March 3rd, with an article which was one made, it indicated that the connective stink from these cane animals was brought in to search of this in the gliding woods. My question is, what happened to our two dogs? Okay. Every time I read something in the paper, we're, we're canine involved in Ledge, our dogs never seem to be there in, in recent.
Okay, my first reaction when reading the article was, it's about time the state dogs were in Ledge, since the Ledge dogs are sometimes preoccupied.
I'm not a poll victim.
No, I, I understand. You know, it's, it's a matter of scheduling, it's a matter of if the officers are not here. I understand that. Again, there's no cost to us. It's one of the things that Ledge has available to us. Actually, whether we're an independent department or a resident trooper, there's mutual aid. I will say that I think it's unusual. I can't remember another case where other town canines were used. It's usually ours because we do have the two.
Right. But despite my rhino, here it is the time. We have to say, we've brought that dog, didn't ours work?
It, it was unusual. I can certainly look into that. In fact, that's a very good question. And again, maybe I was so relieved that our dogs were just enough that I will think new facility. Thank you.
Mr. Eichelberg?
With regard to turning the billing for water over to Groton, is this kind of a one-way bridge? Once we do this, there's no turning back?
Absolutely not. We will be retaining, and we will have access to all of the records. It's a, it's initially, it's anticipated. If we proceed with this, and again, there are many hurdles to get over. There's negotiations that have to go on, both here in the town with our unions and with Groton Utilities. Initially, it's anticipated that we might have a one-year contract with a one-year renewal after that. We really want to take this slow. It is, it is something interesting. It's not just the physical billing, but it's also the, you know, how the customers are going to, to deal with the change. It is going to be quite a dramatic change. We've always had a place for bill, bills to be paid here in town. We do anticipate whether it stays here or goes out of town, that we're going to monthly billing, which will certainly help the process somewhat. But we're also, part of this is to provide many more options to our ratepayers for how they can pay. And we think that is going to be a major step forward with helping our ratepayers to make their payments. So, you know, are, are we locked into anything? We're locked in for the contract, whatever it is, but we're, we're going very deliberately on this.
Okay.
Any other questions for the mayor? On your business, we have one item, but we are not prepared to act on that this evening. Would anybody like to amend the agenda this time under new business? We have the consent calendar, which it-
I'll move the consent calendar. Second.
Okay, the consent calendar is, on that calendar is just a list of routine reappointments. Anybody like to remove anything? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Nine favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number three. Administration?
I will move to appoint the following to the Ledge Town Center Committee with the structure contained in the resolution authorizing the Ledge's Town Center Committee to continue their efforts to encourage economic development in Ledge for a period ending July 27, 2014. Mr. Kevin Dombrowski, Republican, 84 Town Farm Road, Ledge, Town Council Representative. Mr. Louis Caborti, Democrat, 4 Chatham-Berwick, Ledge, Town Council Representative. And Ms. Stephanie Calhoun, Democrat, 118 Gallop Hill Road, Ledge, Board of Education Representative.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number four.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Ellen M. Granger, Democrat, of 15 Thirteenth Drive, Gales Ferry, to the Library Commission for a two-year term ending December 7, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to thank Mr. Moore for his service and Ms. Granger for stepping up.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number five.
I'll move to a, to, um, okay, to a point. Ms. Patricia A. Arsenal, Democrat, of 6 Arrowhead Drive, Ledge, to the Commission for Senior Citizens, a two-year term ending December 9, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Ms. Moore.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say that Mrs. Arsenal will take this very seriously. I know she'll do a wonderful job.
And, and it's a good time to point out as well, both you and Bill thanking people for stepping forward. You know, we're in a really good position with our committees and commissions. We actually have a number of people that have asked to be on committees and commissions. I mean, we have like a bench of people waiting to serve, and it's just such a good position to be in. We're very fortunate. Any other comments, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number six.
I'll move to adopt a proposed resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a grant application and grant award for the town of Ledge to receive up to $125,000 per year from the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration for Drug-Free Communities Support Program as contained in the draft dated March 11, 2014. And I've asked Mary, because of her familiarity, to talk about this a little bit.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a continuation of the grant that we're presently working under. And it's with Ledge Light Health District, and it's our Ledge's Safety and Coalition. And the purpose of the grant is to reduce substance abuse among youth and over time reduce substance abuse among adults by addressing factors in the community that increase the risk of substance abuse and to promote factors that minimize the risk. And the coalition is made up of a number of townspeople, mayor and I also serve on this. And we will do some in-kind services to help pay for the grant.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to indicate to the council, they don't know it, that it's a five-year grant, so we're $125,000 per year. There is a matching in-kind grant, in-kind services required. And you're all aware of that?
Yes, that's right. And we are doing it right now.
If I may speak to this point, just that we, I, I served on this committee during my entire time as principal, and coming up with the in-kind services was not difficult.
No, we're good. It touches just about every department in the town. I'm filling out one for my office right now, so it won't be difficult. So again, it's a, it's a very good program.
Mr. Marshall?
The resolution says up to 125 a year, and the details say 125 a year.
Well, they're applying for the grant. They don't have it yet.
So we don't, so we don't know how much we're going to get.
We're applying for it.
Up to, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, well, my confusion is on the other page where it says it is 125.
Yeah. Page two just says it is for 125,000 a year.
Okay. We could take the up to out.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did.
You're friendly. Can you be friendly?
Um, yes.
And the seconder?
Second.
Okay, we'll just take up to out. Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine favors, zero opposed.
The motion carries, there's two items under Finance. Mr. France?
I'd make a motion authorize the Ledge's regional V N A F Y 14 budgets to be overspent by $40,000, funding to come from increase in nursing revenue. $30,000 to account 1013010153300, professional tech services, and $10,000 to account 1013010158300, employee reimbursement mileage.
Second.
The V N A has seen an increase in the number of patients that they've seen, and that is of course, how much money increase in revenue. The revenue far exceeds $40,000, the increased revenue far exceeds $40,000, looking to overexpend basically to cover services provided that they anticipate for the rest of the year.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine favors, zero opposed.
Motion carries, item number eight.
Make a motion to adopt a proposed ordinance, amending an ordinance for purchasing as contained in the draft dated February 12, 2014.
Second.
This was the subject of our public hearing?
Sure.
Any further questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborti?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine favors are all closed.
Motion carries. Item number five.
I'll move to a, to, um, okay, to appoint Ms. Patricia A. Arsenal, Democrat of 6 Arrowhead Drive, Ledyard, to the Commission for Senior Citizens, a two-year term ending December 9, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Ms. Moore.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say that Mrs. Arsenal will take this very seriously. I know she'll do a wonderful job.
And, and it's a good time to point out as well, both you and Bill thanking people for stepping forward. You know, we're in a really good position with our committees and commissions. We actually have a number of people that have asked to be on committees and commissions. I mean, we have like a bench of people waiting to serve, and it's just such a good position to be in. We're very fortunate. Any other comments, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine favors are all closed.
Motion carries. Item number six.
I'll move to adopt a proposed resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a grant application and grant award for the town of Ledyard to receive up to $125,000 per year from the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration for Drug-Free Communities Support Program as contained in the draft dated March 11, 2014. And I've asked Mary, because of her familiarity, to talk about this a little bit.
Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, this is a continuation of the grant that we're presently working under, and it's with Ledgely Health District, and it's our Ledyard Safe Teens Coalition. And the purpose of the grant is to reduce substance abuse among youth and over time, reduce substance abuse among adults by addressing the factors in the community that increase the risk of substance abuse and to promote factors that minimize the risk. And the coalition is made up of a number of townspeople. Mayor and I also serve on this. And we will do some in-kind services to help pay for the grant.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine favors are all closed.
Motion carries. Item number five.
I'll move to a, to, um, okay, to appoint Ms. Patricia A. Arsenal, Democrat of 6 Arrowhead Drive, Ledyard, to the Commission for Senior Citizens, a two-year term ending December 9, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Ms. Ms. Moore.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I'd just like to say that Mrs. Arsenal will take this very seriously. I know she'll do a wonderful job.
And, and it's a good time to point out as well, both you and Bill thanking people for stepping forward. You know, we're in a really good position with our committees and commissions. We actually have a number of people that have asked to be on committees and commissions. I mean, we have like a bench of people waiting to serve, and it's just such a good position to be in. We're very fortunate. Any other comments, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Caborty?
Yes.